I will call this city council meeting to order on the 7th of March, 2016. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin. Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Amen.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Meske.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Fagerly. Seven present, two absent.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, and just a reminder if you would please put your cellphones on silent or turn them off during the meeting, it would be appreciated. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to our agenda this evening?
I have one item under miscellaneous, Mr. Mayor.
Under miscellaneous?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Amen, anybody else? Okay, I will entertain a motion for the consented items. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items, and on that list is our city council minutes of February 16th, our labor/city council minutes from February 24th, 2016, the municipal utilities board minutes of February 22nd, our Rice Hospital Board minutes of February 17th, the planning commission minutes of February 17th. Also, there's an application for an exempt permit for the Candy Oi Friends of Firearms. There's an accounts payable report that we receive every council meeting, and we're asked to accept the following: the Wilmer Lakes area CVB meeting minutes of January 19th, the building inspection report from February of 2016, and the CER Joint Powers Board minutes of February 26th. You can find all these on our website if you are further interested in reading what they're about. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Proposed same sign, that motion passes. Tonight, we're privileged to have Mr. Dick Doll in the audience with us. Dick has been with the city since October of 1985. It just seems like yesterday, Dick. He's worked as a public works operator all those years, and in approximately 2001, Dick started operating the blade, pushing up the brush and compost piles through our streets. Eventually, he became a very skilled blade operator, moving snow and opening up catch basins. We have a special gift for you, Dick, tonight, and if you'd like to make a statement or a few words, you're certainly welcome to at the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Tem, council members, and the citizens of Wilmer. Just, yeah, I'd like to say a few words tonight. It just, first of all, I appreciate the award that I'm gonna receive tonight of a watch for 30 years' employment with the Public Works Department, City of Wilmer. Lot of things have changed in 30 years, a lot of them good and some of them bad. One main thing a person's gotta realize is how efficient the Public Works Department actually has gotten through the years. Even with, they have made a replacement for my position already, but with that replacement, even as much as the city has grown, a lot of people don't realize, the Public Works Department is actually working with one less employee today than they had 30 years ago. And that has evolved just because of, one of the main good points that happened through the years is they combined actually the Park Department and the Street Department to make public works, and with that, it gave a bigger pool of people to work from. And that's the reason why we're capable of keeping the number of people down, but the city just keeps on growing. The guys out there at the Works Department, they do a terrific job. That's the one thing a lot of people don't realize, we're taken a lot for granted, but they're a group of individuals out there, whatever job you put in front of them, they're gonna complete that task in minimum amount of time and the best of their possibilities. I'd like to also say thank you to the council here for the ones that, through the years, have come and talked to us and asked us our opinion actually as to how we felt something could be done or done better or more efficient. Through the years, there has been a few things that haven't been done well, and one thing is, is there is one job that we were never asked actually as to our opinion as to how it could be done, and that job is a job that is no longer being done by the Public Works Department. That job was privatized, and in the, when that job was privatized, that job is actually being currently done for probably double as to what the Public Works Department could have done it for. At the time when that happened, we could not understand why it was happening. We, as public works employees, could not say anything about it, because if we would've, it would've just been that we were trying to protect our jobs. That's the reason why, after all these years, I'm up here and bringing it back to light, just because I'm no longer a public works employee, so I can say it. So now you're gonna have to believe it, because it is true. One other thing that I wanna bring the attention of the citizens of Wilmer, the city has an ordinance on garbage cans. A garbage can is not supposed to be in a city street, it's supposed to be on the boulevard or behind the curb. You ask what the big deal is? Well, we're coming to summertime, it isn't a big deal then, but in the wintertime, when we have to plow the snow, wherever, whenever it's garbage day on whose ever route it is, we're actually going around hundreds of garbage cans. And the way the Public Works Department became more efficient with their plowing of the snow is most of our equipment carries, has wings on the pieces of equipment, it's basically, it's another snowplow on the side of the truck or the piece of equipment, so you can plow a wider swat. When we go around a garbage can and we have to re-line up to go down the street again, sometimes you make that transition smoothly, the next time you end up bumping the curb, the next time you could smack that curb. Each time that happens, it loosens wells, loosens bolts, and in time, there has been breakage. That piece of equipment goes down, it's a cost to the taxpayer to put it back up. So come next winter, when you see that neighbor putting that garbage can out on the street or road, tell him that there's an ordinance, that it's supposed to be on the curb. He's probably saving him some money and himself. So with that, I wanna say that with retiring from the city, now I can finally do the job that I actually love, and that's solving animal conflicts. I get to do my job that I've been doing nights and weekends for the past 28 years, running my nuisance control business, Dick's Nuisance Animal Control, where I work on houses to remove and exclude bats and critters. So the next time, if you happen to see me at the neighbor's house working or something, and if you do wanna know what has costed you some extra tax dollars for the year, if you recognize me, come over and ask. I'll elaborate a little bit more, but other than that, I really wanna thank everybody, and I will miss this job and this position. Thank you and be safe.
Congratulations. Joe.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you again, Dick, for your comments and for your service, and hats off to you and all the employees at Public Works. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the hearing, our improvement hearing, and I'll turn it over to Sean Christensen.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. As per state statute and time on the clock or the calendar, it actually is, we'll do our annual improvement report or improvement hearing, and so I'll try to go through this relatively quickly, so that if you guys have questions at the end or interrupt on the way through, I can answer those questions. See if I can keep up this year with my own notes here. So the position of the city of Wilmer is to seek input from all citizens and interested or affected by the upcoming improvement projects. The city's decision, it helps out the city's decision-making process by having the public involvement and the public input on those projects. So the purpose of this hearing is to explain the proposed projects and for the council to hear those projects and estimated costs of those projects, and to obtain input from So in front of you there is the, just a list of the people involved. Of course, all of you are involved as well, but the mayor, Mayor Calvin, myself is for the explanation of the proposed projects, and then Mayor Pro Tem tonight, Mr. Christensen will close the hearing. Excuse me, there's a little asterisk behind, beside the public comments, and that would be for the public to please, if you rise, when you rise, and give comments, talk directly into the microphone, give your full name and address before your comments, so the hearing is being recorded live on TV for all the world to see. Don't let that scare you. So scope of our improvements this year, as typical, we've got reconstruction projects, we have overlay projects, and then we have a few miscellaneous projects that I'll touch on just briefly tonight, a few of those. We're doing, in general, we're doing almost seven tenths of a mile of reconstruct, we're doing over two and a half miles of overlay projects, plus we're doing 24,000 square feet of overlay at the wastewater treatment facility, and then we're doing some miscellaneous parking lot repair, crack seal, seal coat, and we're doing two sanitary lift stations this spring and summer for the construction of those projects. This one's kinda hard to see, this map is, but basically indicates the areas, the project areas that we're working on this year, and as you can see, the purple, if you can see, the purple is overlay projects, so that would be, and I'll go into more details on these, but we've got Ella and Minnesota and Lakeland Drive. The reconstruct project, the large one, of course, is Seven and a Half Street, and we've got a small section that you probably can't see, 'cause I put it there and I can't see it, on Second Street, it's just one block, and then we've got some path overlays and, like I say, parking lot repair. So typical reconstruction, typical section on current standards is 10 inches of gravel base, four inches of batuminous, the blacktop, geotextile if needed for drainage, tile and tile services, and then remove and replace curb and gutter as needed. We're doing, like I said, we're doing 6,700, it's almost seven tenths of a mile is proposed this year for reconstruction. You don't have to memorize the number, I don't even memorize it all, so. Anyway, the 1601 projects for the reconstruct, we're doing Seven and a Half Street Southwest. As I mentioned, we're doing from 19th Avenue Southwest to Wilmer Avenue Southwest, so it's a long stretch of street there. We're also doing 15th Avenue Southwest between Seventh and Eighth Street, so it's a short block in there, since we're doing both sides of the intersection, we would, we're gonna throw that in as well. And the estimated cost on those two sections of street is $970,000 and change. We're also doing Second Street Southwest, as I mentioned, and that's gonna be a concrete section for that block of street, and we'll go over that, and it's another project number internally, so I'll go over that here in just a minute. So these are some existing pictures, actually not existing, 'cause it wouldn't look like this today with 60-degree weather, but these were December pictures of Seven and a Half Street, and as you can see, there's some, and I've got more notes than you care to look at here in front of me, the original construction was, on that street was 1923. It was reconstructed in 1987. It's a half-mile in length, it's currently has six inches of aggregate base and four inches of blacktop. The rating, our rating system, as I've mentioned many times, is a 60 on this particular section of street. The, I've got notes here of the issues with that particular street, and the one that sticks out the most beyond the cracking that you can see in the rough ride and the settling of the patching, is that there have been water main breaks on that section of street, actually south of 15th Avenue in 1989, 93, 94, twice, 2003, '05, '09, and 2012. So that section of water line is in dire need of replacement, as well as the street in that section. The existing water line in that section of street is four-inch cast iron, and so that's gonna be replaced with eight-inch PVC, and then the eight-inch clay sanitary sewer's gonna be replaced with eight-inch PVC. Some more of an overview of the street itself, you can see 19th Avenue would be on the left side of your street, or of your screen, the Wilmer Avenue would be on the right side of your screen as it abuts the school property, and then that short section, I said it's a block, but it's, it's just over a block probably long of that 15th Avenue Southwest, they will do that section as well, since we're going through that intersection anyway. The estimated cost on this one, by the way, is breaking it down, is just over $865,000. So this is that short section of 15th Avenue Southwest, as I said, from Eighth to Seventh Street, and that may seem strange saying it that way, but that's reading left to right if you're looking north being up, so it's a, it might be an engineer thing, but that's the way we kinda do that, so. That section of street is 475 feet in length, it was originally constructed in 1967. There is seven inches of base under that and three inches of blacktop, and the current rating on that section of street is a 20, so it's rather low. We've repaired a number of frost boils in '08, 2010, and 2011, and the proposed section is, as I mentioned before, estimated cost is just over $105,000 for that section of, for that section of street, and that would include, I'm sorry, they include the water and sewer replacements. So this is, excuse me, six, picture of our concrete section, and this would be there by the Walt's Car Wash, the section of street we have in town currently, and this is, so this is about what you would see during the construction of that concrete section of street. The estimated cost on the section of Second Street Southwest is around $250,000 for that concrete section. That'll be a six-inch concrete paving, it'll be six inches of aggregate underneath that, and then new curb and gutter the full length. We're gonna replace water line, replace sewer line, and reconnect the services. The existing street, 420 feet in length, was constructed in 1950, it was overlaid in 1979, it only has three inches of aggregate under that section of street and one and a half inches of blacktop or batuminous. And as you can imagine, with the fire trucks in and out of there, the hospital traffic in and out of there, there's a lot of weight, and there's a lot of heavy turning movements on that section of street, which was why the proposal to put that section in concrete was given, or is being given. So as we switch to overlays, we have three major sections of overlays this year. The total length is two and three-quarter miles of overlays. The, what we do on a typical overlay is we'll mill off, which is what this machine here in front of you, an inch and a half, and then we'll replace that inch and a half and make a smooth ride out of it, we'll new blacktop and make that strength and integrity of that street last longer. The, as I'll get into a little bit later, Lakeland Drive is a little different, we're gonna actually mill and overlay three inches, so I'm proposing three inches of overlay on that section to get a better section on that, on that street. Also, I might add, on an overlay, if there are damaged areas to the curb and gutter, we correct them as needed in sections under before the overlay, so that it, when it's done, it looks like a brand-new street. So our overlay projects are broken into two sections, a state aid section this year and a non-state aid section this year. And so our state aid projects this year would be Lakeland Drive, and it goes from Trunk Highway 12 by the Burger King and Home State Bank, all the way north to Civic Center Drive, where it ends at Midwest Campus. That, it's, it's, like I said, it's state aid, and so that's, that'll be a big factor in helping us, helping us construct that project. Ella Avenue from Seventh Street Northwest to First Street is also, so that's from JC Park to the First Street Bridge, that section in there is gonna be overlaid, as well as the bike path along that section. The length on those two streets or those two segments is a mile and a half, and the estimated cost for those two sections of street is $980,000. So this is a picture in December as well of Lakeland Drive, and as you'll notice, the double line on the right side of the pictures, that's our, that's our bike lane, and you can't see any signs in these pictures, but there are signs there as well. The plan for this is to, after the overlay, to have bike lane painted on both sides of the street, as well as signage for those bikes, and to have, to help continue our pathway improvements around the, into and around the city. Length of this section of street is just over a mile long. It was reconstructed in 1984, and it's got 12 inches of aggregate, six inches of batuminous asphalt on that. The rating is currently 55, and the plan on this one, as I mentioned, is to mill three inches, which is more than our standard, and replace that three inches for an estimated cost of just over $800,000 for this mile of section of road. I might also add that this, this section of Lakeland Drive is, in '06, was designated as a truck route, which is why it's got stronger base, so it's state aid helps do that, and so it's got more base and more batuminous on that. This picture of Ella Avenue, it's almost a half-mile in length. It was, it was recently overlaid in 2000, in, I'm sorry, in 2000. It's got six inches of aggregate base and five and a half inches of batuminous asphalt on a current rating of 70. The plan on this section of street is to mill an inch and a half and repave that inch and a half, as well as on the path, although we probably won't mill as much or any on the pathway, just to add some integrity to that, to the strength of that pathway, that bike path. The estimated cost for this section of road and path is $182,000. The other section, large section of, we took bigger sections this year for, especially for our overlay, but even some of the reconstructs. So the next section of non-state aid projects is Minnesota Avenue. The plan, the proposal is to overlay Minnesota Avenue all the way from 18th Street Southwest to First Street, so the entire length of 18th Street, it's just over a mile in length, and, and that, whoops, I got mixed up on my notes, I'm sorry. Just over a mile in length, obviously outside of that, that one block there by Garfield School, that doesn't have a street section through there, so the plan would be to do that entire street, inch and a half of overlay and inch and a half replacement of that blacktop. The other section, the other project on the 1603B is wastewater treatment facility, we're doing a portion of their parking lot, 24,000 square feet of parking lot on that one, and the estimated cost for both those projects combined is $680,000. So these are a few sec, few pictures of Minnesota Avenue from 18th Street, like I said, to First Street, and I can't tell you exactly which block this is, although people watching may be able to recognize something, I can't tell you exactly which, which block this is. The length of this street is, as I mentioned, is over a mile in length, originally constructed in 1948. It's got six inches of aggregate and four inches of batuminous on this section, and some, some notes that jump out here are the decay of the, of the blacktop, the transverse and longitudinal cracking, and then a number of frost boils that we've replaced over the years. The rating on this street ranges from a 50 to a 65. The plan on this section is to overlay, or mill and overlay an inch and a half of the batuminous and remove and replace curb and gutter as needed. Estimated cost on this section is, in the neighborhood of $640,000. This is a picture of the wastewater treatment area, and you can see the light section on the left side of your screen, on the west side is what, is where the overlay is, it's the biosolage storage driveway, for those of you taking notes. It was originally constructed in 1996, it's got eight inches of aggregate, two and a half inches, actually four inches of batuminous, and the plan on this one is to mill and overlay that inch and a half to the estimated cost of around $36,000. So parking lot repair, this is up on Technology Drive Northeast. As you can see from the picture, we've got some, some areas that are heaving and breaking up pretty good, and the unfortunate part, if you can see on the right side of the screen, is that those, the largest heaves are right behind a handicap signs or handicap parking places, and so it makes it awful difficult for, for people using those handicap spots to navigate across the street. So the plan is to dig that up as needed and repair what's needed and replace that. The estimated cost for that section is just under $30,000. I'm sorry, the, some more notes on that, it was originally built in 1966, there is only one and a half inches of wearing, of course, blacktop on that, and three inches of class five base on top of five inches of just plain sand and gravel. So that's pretty much it for the projects, our project schedule going forward is, of course, tonight's top of the list there, the March 7th improvement hearing. Our bid letting will be in a couple weeks, we'll start advertising, given the go-ahead by, by you folks, we'll start advertising tomorrow, and then we'll open those bids coming up. We'll have our assessment hearing in mid-May after we collect the bids and do the assessments, the math and the formulas on that, so that we can get proper notifications. We'll award, we're planning on awarding the bid mid-May and begin construction in June, knowing full well we have some, some conflicts, scheduling conflicts, county fair, Wilmer Fest, things of that nature that we have to, that we'll jog around, and then obviously we'll plan on ending construction prior to October. So if you were doing the math, hopefully my, oops, hopefully my math came out the same as yours did, but maybe, it's a secret, there we go. So reconstruction, 1.2 million, overlays, 1.6 million or 1.7, miscellaneous projects of around $30,000 for a grand total of 2016 projects of 2.9 million. And that, of course, will be covered with special assessments, bonds, state aid funding, and a number of other items that we can discuss also. Okay, so our assessment schedule, and this may be a better question for Kevin as we get moving on to this, but we'll just send a reminder note somewhere around September, full payment without interest near the end of October, partial prepayment allowed before that October 31st date, excuse me, first payment due will be May 15th, and prepayments are allowed in excess of $1,500 before November 15th. That's all I have for you. I was kinda quick, and I apologize for that, but if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Actually, I've got some frequently asked questions, if anybody's interested, and I can go through them, or I can just wait and see if they come up during these questions.
Sure, why don't you do that. Thank you, Sean. Why don't you stand by, and this is a public hearing, is there anybody from the public that wants to speak to the improvement hearing? Come up to the podium, please, state your name and address, and then your question, and Sean will help us out.
Hi, I'm Mary Quall, and I live at 1409 Southwest Eighth Street, but my lot, our land goes way back to Seven and a Half Street, and they had contacted me last year and wanted to know if they, if they could put sewer and water in our back lot, and we said, no, we didn't want it, 'cause we wouldn't be doing anything back there. And then it's, I think it's a 50-foot lot, so they were gonna check to see if a house could even be built on a 50-foot lot, but I've never heard anything from them. So that's a question I have.
Sean, are you aware of that? If you could answer her.
I'm not, I wasn't aware of that, but I will look into it. My understanding is, yes, you can build a lot, a house on a 50-foot lot if you, with the proper setbacks, and my recommendation would be to put the services into the lot, so that they're there and ready for when, winner if somebody ever builds on that particular lot.
Would that, would the fees for that then go to the owner of the lot?
If that lot fronts Seven and a Half Street, yes. If it's one lot that fronts Eighth Street, I would tend to say no. 'Cause there are some lots on that particular street, on Seven and a Half, that don't face Seven and a Half Street, they actually face Eighth.
Is this considered one parcel, or is it two?
Well, we pay tax on two.
Then I suspect that the two parcels, then, if it was to be put in, the owner of the property would be subject to paying the bill for that.
That would be, that would be my guess as well, without looking at that particular lot on GIS and figuring that out. If, if there is a separate lot that faces Seven and a Half, then I would say, yes, it would be, it would be subject to the assessments.
And we can't force homeowners to do that, of course, and if it's your will or your wish to not have it put in.
That's a question I have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say you don't have to. We highly recommend, so we don't have to dig up the street again, when and if something ever happens in that particular lot, but without looking at that lot in front of me, it'd be hard for me to say definitively what needs to be done in that particular section.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, and thank you again, Sean. Any other questions or comments from people living in, name, address, and?
Paul Tinklinburg, 2105 Fourth Avenue Southeast in Wilmer. You ready, Sean?
Ready.
All right. When I looked at the map and I saw the, I think the number of blocks of reconstruction was seven blocks on Seven and a Half Street and roughly 11. was seven blocks on Seven-and-a-Half Street and roughly one, one-and-a-half on Fifteenth Avenue, and I think that was it for reconstruction.
And Second.
Complete, oh, and that does include water and sewer on Second Street? Okay. So, roughly ten blocks out of how many, do you know how many city blocks we have?
Hundred and thirty miles.
Okay. So, my concern is, you know, I know finances play a big part of this, but at what point is it more cost-effective to reconstruct versus continuing to patch, repair water lines? We have a lot of streets with cast-iron water mains and clay sewer lines, so are we aggressive enough? I don't know. I don't have the answers, it's just a concern, and again, I realize this is very costly. So, that was number one, and then number two was, on Seventh-and-a-Half Street, it goes through some really low ground, and so does Fifteenth Avenue, and my question to Sean was, is fabric going to be automatic, or is that determined by a compaction test? And what are your thoughts on using fabric? Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Mayor, members of the council, the fabric is spec'd on every project in the event that it's needed, and so as we get to opening things up and seeing what that soil looks like and seeing what the compaction does look like in that area, and some of the soil quality or ground, geotechnical qualities, then we make that determination. But it is spec'd and bid on every project, it's just a matter of how much of it that we need. When most people say fabric, it's a broad range, or when I say fabric, it's a broad range. So, fabric can mean anything from what looks like a blanket to a grid section in my mind, so it's a matter of basing it on what the ground looks like, what those characteristics are in each section, and taking it case-by-case basis and using the item or the type of fabric best suited for that particular area.
And maybe, Sean, you could explain what that fabric actually does, how it helps with those low areas and wet areas.
Sure, sure. So, there's different types, as I mentioned. There are fabrics that are completely water barriers, all the way to, like I said, a grid structure that is a fabric that will hold the base under a road better, and so you can put a fabric or a grid section under a road to completely separate the bad soils or the very fine soils with the gravel base of your road in order to not seep that, the gravel base of the structure of that road down into the soft sections of the road. The grid structure works much similar. It doesn't, it doesn't block water from coming through, but what it does is it actually holds the rocks, the fine, or the, it keeps, doesn't keep the fines out, but it holds the rocks in place, so it makes a locking mechanism, so it holds that road structure in a better section.
Okay, thank you, and as far as the amount that we're, this is to Paul's question, the amount that we do each year, I think it's the consensus of the council, we aren't doing enough, but a lot of that is left up to money available, state aid money, and the money that the city has to put in, and we rely on the state aid quite heavily, and I know you figure it in every year for street projects, our improvement projects. Are there any other questions or comments from people affected by this improvement hearing?
Mr. Mayor, pro temp, members of council, to your point on doing enough, I did look back through two thousand and ten, and outside of one or two years in that section, we're doing more this year than we have in the past, so, I mean, if that eases some people's minds, is it enough? It's still a hundred and thirty miles of road we try to get through, so, you know, we are doing more than we have in the last few years.
Okay, we appreciate that. I do have a letter here from a lady who could not be here this evening, Mr. or Miss Kathy Petrick, she lives at eight-thirteen Lakeland Drive in Wilmer. She's got a list of questions here, and I think for her benefit, I will read them, Kevin, and either you or Sean can give a quick answer to them. There's eight of them on here. Her first one is, what formula is used to determine the assessment amount?
Mr. Mayor, pro temp, I think, I looked through these questions pre-meeting, and I think they are mostly going to be easily answered by the clerk, so I might defer, I might defer to him on these.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp, members of the council, we have followed by past practice a system of using linear feet, and so we assess those properties that are benefited and their address site is against the construction of the street, and subsequent to all of those things, you may have picked up tonight that there's some overlays of different sizes. Couple of one-and-a-halves, and there's a three. Pursuant to case law, you must have a uniform assessment rate for different types of property, industrial, commercial, residential. We have the same rate as past practice to all of them, but that has to be the lower construction amount of one-and-a-half inches of overlay, so those streets that have three inches, you cannot assess a higher amount for a street that has a higher build factor, and so the taxpayers as a whole pick up that additional cost. And so, the rate that we determine comes post-bid will be the same for Minnesota, Ella, and Lakeland Drive.
Okay, your second question is, after two thousand and six, when large trucks were approved to use Lakeland Drive and the speed limit was raised, there's been a significant increase in truck traffic on the road. How do you factor in the wear and tear from large trucks into the assessments?
Technically, you cannot assess trucks, you wouldn't know the quantity or who they were, but larger streets, all of them, First Street, Nineteenth, Wilmer, all of them we may have talked about tonight, are built larger and deeper. The base might be ten inches instead of six, even the blacktop might be six inches instead of four. The way you account for it is that the rate is of the lower city street standard of approximately ten inches of gravel base and four inches of blacktop, and those streets with lots of trucks are just built heavier.
Are those typically ten-ton roads, as we hear, for the larger trucks?
Yes, and I don't remember if that was a nine or a ten, but that one is, because it's state aid, because it's designated as a truck route, it was built, as Kevin said, has more base, it has more blacktop on that, more strength to that section of road. I might also add, as far as the truck route goes and the, taking it into account for the trucks, they are taxed more than a regular passenger car. I don't know the numbers, but so they kind of get their money for those vehicles out of the separate taxing mechanism.
Okay. Question number three, will higher usage, large trucks, and those properties that contribute to this truck traffic be assessed at a higher rate since they're heavy users? I think we've already answered that. Number four was, have you taken into account the impact of the assessment in relation to the value of the properties?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in our policy, we always take into account the value of the property, and the bottom line after all of our assessment properties are looked at, with corner lots and unusual large lots or agricultural lots, there has to be a benefit ratio that we, as staff, look at, and if it is too high by the long linear footage, which is this individual in question, it will be lowered to kind of match a market value increase.
Number five, is there a maximum percentage of assessment to property value ratio? Same answer?
No such structure.
Okay. Number six is, how will you mitigate the assessment to make the assessment proportionate to the property value? I think you answered that.
That's market review.
Number four. Number seven, have you taken into account properties that are zoned agricultural?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you may recall, our assessment policy has an agricultural deferment category, but most of the properties here do not qualify for that. That is five acres of cropland, and every August, they have to verify if the subsequent year, they will be in cropland, and I don't believe any of them that we have reviewed exceed the five acres of actual farmland.
Okay. Her final question, number eight, is, are you able to provide any programs or assistance to properties zoned agricultural?
Well, that would simply be only the deferment if it qualified, and we have several properties around town, and we have deferred those until development, but in this case, for this individual calling, they would not qualify.
That leads to another question, which would be, are there programs that are available to the elderly or people who might not be able to afford this assessment to help them out?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, pursuant to state law, chapter four-twenty-nine, senior citizens with homestead property can qualify for a deferment. In so doing, it is deferred until such time as they lose the homestead on that property. Interest increases for ten years, matching the bonds, and then terminates and stays at that same figure. Disabled people and certain veterans programs also qualify by their own set of rules.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody else from the public that would wish to speak to these, this improvement hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing and bring it up to the council. I might remind the council that it does take a supermajority vote to pass any improvement hearing, which would be seven votes, and there are seven of us here this evening. Council, your wishes? Mr. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro temp. I'd move approval of the improvements as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the improvements as presented this evening. Any further comments or questions by the council? Councilman Amon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro temp. Sean, you mentioned earlier, has this been scaled on from its original proposal that you had this spring on any areas?
No, actually, I think it's been increased by the, that block or block-plus of Fifteenth Avenue. We added that back in, and then we also added in that section of Technology Drive. I don't know if you saw that before or not. No, it has not been scaled down.
My question is on, and I am a property owner on Second Street southwest. I just look at the condition of the street there, running south to, I believe it's Candy High Avenue by Rice Park. The condition of that street is in pretty tough shape, and I'm just wondering why that wasn't considered. Was it because of financial commitments that was not done, and when would that be done in the future? My neighbors also are concerned about the condition of that street.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, pro temp, Councilmember Amon, that, of course, all sections are considered each year. We weigh a lot of the actions we take and proposals we make based on the utility, you know, that I mentioned earlier, the utility breaks and things of that nature. There is a number of streets that are in that category of needing to be rebuilt, and I would say that a number, any number of those are considered on a given year based on our history of those streets and things of that nature. The other thing I would mention is, or I would like to mention is that you notice that we're approaching the three million dollars, and that's when we weigh everything and, obviously, on estimates at that time, when we weigh all of our options and talk to finance directors, and we've talked to bond council, we have a number in mind that we can't bond more than to get to that, that end of construction, and so we pick that number, we kind of back into what fits into our project, what makes the most sense, and we go from there.
I think one other question, Sean. We talked earlier about the possibility of oil prices are down, if it's going to have an impact. Have you seen any reflection on that, or any other bidding projects that you've seen throughout the communities or state?
Mayor, pro temp, Councilmember Amon, I've not seen any other projects being bid yet. I think everybody's in the same boat and trying to speculate what that might look like. Oil prices are down. Does that relate immediately to that one-line item on a project going down? I can't tell you that yet. I'm hopeful that it will, but again, it'd be one-line item on an entire project, and, you know, to speculate how much that would lower the overall three million dollars' worth of construction, it would be, it would be a guess at this point to do that.
All right, thank you, Sean.
Any other questions, Kevin? Councilman Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro temp. Thank you, Sean, for your work regarding this. Just for curiosity's sake, going back, say, the last ten years or so, what's, we saw the construction estimated cost. What's typical margin of error?
Councilmember Plowman, what I've always liked to do as an engineer is to be within ten percent with my estimate, and of course, I never want to be the low bidder. I, you know, I don't want to underestimate any project, and so we take all that into consideration, we take past projects into consideration, which, on the oil prices comment, makes things a little more interesting this year. But, yeah, we, our margin of error, what we like to see is less than ten, or within ten percent of the low bidder or of multiple bidders, if they're in the ballpark of each other, but at no time do I want to be significantly lower than the bids that come in.
All right, thank you.
Any other further comments or questions? If not, this is a resolution, so roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Before we leave the hearing, I think the, I want to put them questions back up. Question number two and four, I think, maybe, Sean, you could answer those for the public. They're quite often asked.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, sorry, Mayor, pro temp. The number two would be, how will the owners be notified when the work starts? And it says there that we hand-deliver notices three to five days in advance. That seems rather short. What I would say is that in most cases, you're going to know well before that time, and we will, whether it's door hangers or whether it's door-to-door, you will be notified of those, of that process before it gets to that point. And then which number, I'm sorry?
Four, second to last there.
Absolutely can get to, it says, can I get to my residence during construction? The contractors work very well with the homeowners. In fact, last year, right after construction started, we ended up with a gentleman with a broken leg, and so they did what they needed to do to get that gentleman into the, into and out of his place, so I would say, yes, you're never going to be blocked out of your house or your property.
Okay, thank you again, Sean.
Yep.
We will continue here down the agenda. We have open forum, nobody has signed up for this evening, so we'll go to the Finance Committee report, Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro temp. The meeting was held February twenty-second. There were no public comments. First item, to discuss, a staff requested the reallocation of capital improvement funding for both thin clients for the use of the council and staff tablets in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars, and purchase of a document management system in the amount of forty-one thousand dollars. The eighteen thousand dollar request was tabled at that, at this time. And Mr. Smaby explained the need for a secure document, electronic document management system. The system would ensure the protection of documents, help in auditing, contains all the city's documents, and aid in record retention. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I'll introduce a resolution to repurpose forty-one thousand dollars from the information systems thin client capital improvement project to the document management system project.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the council?
If not, the resolution has been introduced to repurpose forty-one thousand dollars from the information systems thin client capital improvement project to the document management system project. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item was new city website, and staff presented to us an agreement with revised software systems to create a new city website at an estimated cost of twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. It was explained the need for the new website with software that will provide a variety of applications for citizens' engagement, staff productivity, mobile devices, and accessibility features. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with revised LLC in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars to create a new city website.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for this resolution, and the resolution is to authorize the mayor and city administrator entering into an agreement with revised LLC in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. Any further questions or comments from council? If not, roll call.
Councilmember Amon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Meske? Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
Our next item was donation to the Law Enforcement Explorer Program. Staff presented to the committee a donation of $250 to the Wilmer Police Department Law Enforcement Explorer Program, and that came from Dunick Concrete Company. It's a requirement that the council adopt all donations by resolution. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I will introduce a resolution accepting the $250 from Dunick Concrete Company and to direct the city administrator to send a letter of appreciation for that donation.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the resolution. Resolution is to accept the donation of $250 from Dunick Concrete Company and to direct the city administrator to send a letter of appreciation to Dunick for that. Any questions or comments from the council? If not, roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
That discussion led to another discussion on donation protocols, and staff presented a proposed change in protocol for staff to acknowledge all donations by letter and regularly inform the council for acceptance of these donations by resolution. It was proposed that staff will accumulate all donations to be presented at the end of the year for formal review and audit purposes and state compliance. Following some discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I'll move the recommendation of the committee to approve the donation protocol as amended to be presented quarterly to the city council for formal review.
We have a motion before us to approve the donation protocols amended to be presented quarterly to the council for a formal approval. Any questions or comments from council?
I'll second it.
We have a second. Now, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments by the council? If not, this is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Item number seven.
The next item is LED retrofit lighting project, and this will be a resolution. It lists motion, but it'll be a resolution. We presented an agreement for the purchase of LED conversion kits from Enderman Enterprises for $17,420.13, and installation by Kim's Electric for $6,840, and this is for the Public Works Lighting Project. Those two totaled $24,260.13. The 2016 capital outlay program included $35,000 for this LED lighting project. Following some discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I'll introduce a resolution to approve the agreements for LED conversion kits.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the resolution to approve the agreements for the LED conversion kits. Any questions or comments from council? If not, roll call.
Councilmember Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
Our next item on the agenda was to accept an authorized final payment for Project 1404. It was presented to us, a recommendation to accept an authorized final payment to Vreeman Construction in the amount of $42,798.46 for Project Number 1404 for the 12th Street Southeast, new construction from 11th Avenue Southeast to Wilmer Avenue Southeast. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I'll introduce a resolution to approve the final payment of $42,798.46 to Vreeman Construction.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution of the final payment of $42,798.46 to Vreeman Construction. Any comments or questions from council? If not, roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
The next item was purchase of turnout gear. We presented a recommendation to approve the purchase of five sets of NFPA-approved firefighting turnout clothing at an estimated cost of $2,029 each. Total cost would be $10,145. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, to approve the purchase of the NFPA-approved firefighting turnout clothing in the estimated amount of $10,145.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and is this not a resolution, Kevin, because of the amount of money?
No, sir. We're just buying stuff.
Just buying stuff?
Out of contract.
Okay. We have a motion before us to approve the purchase of the NFPA-approved firefighting turnout clothing for a total estimated cost of $10,145. Any comments or questions from the council? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes.
The next item was Rice Hospital Financial Statement. We reviewed the Rice Hospital Financial Statement with the Rice Hospital Board will be addressing us at a future council meeting or committee meeting. They generally meet with the Finance Committee on a quarterly basis. That was for information only. The final item had to do with the revised draft of the city purchasing policy. Staff presented an Arden Hills purchasing policy in legislative print with changes setting levels of authority, and those changes were made from the February 8 Financial Committee meeting. Councilmember Nelson made a motion to table the action on any proposed policy and asked staff to bring back information to clarify the process and timing of the capital improvement and vehicle replacement policies. That motion was seconded and passed, so it was tabled, so that will be for information only. Unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file these minutes as stated. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I just was curious, when we had the discussion regarding the donation protocols, I thought there would be something in the minutes. I think we asked for some sort of public document for how people can donate to the city and what the process would be and those steps, but I didn't see anything in the minutes reflecting that conversation.
Mr. Mayor Protem and council, I know that we added a section, I'm just looking for it here, on the policy, but that's something that staff can look into, and I didn't think that was actually going to be a part of the policy.
Not part of the policy, but I think we specifically asked, since people are having trouble figuring out how they can donate. I know there were issues with the Dog Park and with some of the others where people wanted to donate money, and they said there wasn't a process in place. So, we had that discussion at the meeting about making sure that that was available so people understood how that would work and what they would get and that it would qualify for a deduction. So, I thought we were going to be seeing that come back to us, and it wasn't in the minutes.
So noted, Mr. Mayor Protem and Councilmember Nelson. We will look into that. I know that's part of our website update, that we want to make that donations easy for people giving money to the city and specific projects, so. I think part of the discussion was, you can't just write a check to the Dog Park. It has to be to the city of Wilmer, and in the memo, you could put the Dog Park, but Audrey did bring it up at the meeting, and there needs to be something out there letting people know how they can donate to whatever, the aquatic facility or Splash Park or whatever. Maybe that could be put on the website and be further explained there. Did I answer your question? Go ahead.
I guess I'd like to actually see it come back to the Finance Committee to be reviewed so that if there are questions, because people who have wanted to donate money said that they can't do it in a manner where they can get a receipt and do a deduction. So, I'd like to see something in writing that we are meeting those needs so that people can do that.
So noted. Okay, we're down to the item number 11 on the agenda, Civic Center Arena Special Event on Sale Liquor License Holder. We need to vote on filing the minutes. Sorry about that, folks. Any further questions or comments from the council? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor Protem, if you would allow me to backtrack.
Sure.
On the order of the improvement, I see there's a secondary resolution. This is one that the engineers prepared plans and specs, and that the resolution would say they're hereby approved, ordered a publication and the advertisement for bids, and the bid letting on April 5. If you would humor me, but backtrack and adopt that resolution so that we have proper documentation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, I don't see any number on this resolution. Is it the?
I'm not certain if it was in your packet, right behind the resolution to order the improvements.
It is. It says, evidently, it's for the final plans, specification are hereby approved and publications, advertisement business here with authorized. Is that the one? Correct. Okay. Multiple bid packages will be publicly opened and read, with the first opening scheduled for 1:00 p.m. on the 5th of April 2016 at City Office Building 333, Southwest 6th Street in Wilmer. That is the motion to approve that resolution, and we had a second on it, correct? Yes, sir. Any further comments or questions on that by council? If not, roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number 11. Kevin, Civic Center Arena Special Event.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, the Civic Center has been in conversations with the Wilmer Curling Club, and they will lease the area for a three-day curling novice bond spiel. It'll be held in March 11, 12, and 13, and the Curling Club has plans to serve alcohol in the controlled area from past activities. The permit holder would be Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery LLC, and it is staff's recommendation that we approve this permit for the sale of alcohol at the Civic Center on this event.
Council?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the permit for Civic Center Arena Special Event for the bond spiel. Now, we've done this before, and I'm assuming everything's fine with the chief. Okay. Any further comments and questions by the council? If not, is that a roll call, Kevin? Resolution also?
Because it's alcohol by our code of ordinance, yes.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Item Number 12, we also have a premise permit for New London Spicer Booster Club at Ruff's Swings and, Ruff's Wings and Sports Bar. Ruff's Wings. Sounds like baseball season. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, this has worked its way back to the council from activity in November of 2015 whereby the council was inquiring as to any local groups wanting to work on this premise permit. We have investigated that and pursuant to some initial concerns, and then nobody stepping forward. We are working with the people from Ruff's Wings to allow this to go to the New London Spicer Booster Club. It is staff's recommendation that we adopt this premise permit. By current standards, which have changed a while back, we only adopt the resolution once, and then they automatically get renewed unless there's concerns there. So, staff recommendation to adopt the resolution granting Ruff's request.
Council?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the premise permit for the New London Spicer Booster Club at Ruff's Wings and Sports Bar. Any further comments or questions by council? If not, roll call, Kevin.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That brings us down to Missalani, and Mr. Amon, you had an item for the end of the meeting.
Oh, yeah, for the good of order, just a question to staff. I had a few constituents call me regarding the publication notifications on our resolutions that are required by state statute to be notified in the newspaper. My understanding is that the newspaper also should be putting those on their webpage for accessibility according to state statutes, and if somebody could please check into that to see if they're right or wrong, I'd appreciate it. I believe that the posting on their webpage is no additional cost or should be no additional cost according to state statutes, staff that listed on there, and currently, I don't believe they have.
Is that for all postings, or is it? The improvement hearing?
These are the postings that are required by state statute to be publicized in the paper according to state law that we are obligated to do. Kevin can probably elaborate more on it if he wants.
So, you're saying that they need, if they're posted in the paper, they have to be posted?
On the website. On their webpage.
Have you heard of that, Kevin?
I have none at this point, Mr. Mayor Protem, but we'll investigate whether that's a requirement for an improvement hearing, and if it is, I trust it'll follow right up with the assessment hearing that's here in two months, so we'll have an answer by that time.
Okay. Well, good question. Any other further comments or questions, Missalani? Go ahead, Audrey.
I just wanted to go back to the consent items. I didn't get a chance to comment before we voted. I think we had three sets of minutes in the consent agenda items that had not been reviewed by the, had not been approved yet by the bodies where they came from. And I know that, or noticed that the utilities always puts on there that it's subject to the board's approval, and I'm wondering if that isn't something that we couldn't do consistent, so we are aware if some of the minutes haven't been approved by those organizations yet, so we're aware that they could be subject to change.
So, you're saying that they haven't been approved by the board?
Right. I believe the hospital board hasn't met yet, also the community and rec board, and there was a third one when I went through there, that I don't think, they haven't approved those minutes yet.
The first one you mentioned was the utilities, I think.
No, I mentioned the utilities always on their minutes puts that it hasn't been approved yet, and I'm asking for that to be done on the other minutes, so when we read them, we[1655.33]
Booster Club at Ruff's Wings and Sports Bar. Any further comments or questions by council? If not, roll call, Kevin?
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That brings us down to miscellaneous, and Mr. Amon, you had an item for the end of the meeting.